Ladies and gentlemen, today being the day fixed by the Constitution for the convening of the Congress of the Philippines for its first session once a year, the first session of the first regular session of the Senate in the 20th Congress of the Philippines is hereby called to order. May the Chair call on Senator Bam Aquino to lead the chamber in prayer. You may proceed, sir.
Panginoon, nagpapasalamat po kami sa isa pang pagkakataon na makapagsilbi sa ating bayan. Humihingi po kami ng tapang na gawin ang tama at nararapat para sa aming bayan. Humihingi kami ng tiwala sa taong bayan na siyang naglukluk sa amin dito at sa inyo Panginoon na may gabay sa buong bansa. At humihingi rin kami ng pagkaisa na kahit magkakaiba man ang aming mga kasaysayan, samahan at pananaw, kaya naming unahin ang kapakanan at pangailangan ng taong bayan. Pagkaisa para sa mga nasalanta ng bagyo, naapektuhan sa matinding pag-ulan at lahat puna ngangailangan. Maraming salamat Panginoon at naway patuloy inyong kaming gabayan. Sa ngalan ng iyong anak. Amin.
Thank you Senator Bam. Please remain standing for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem, the Senate Hymn, Senado ng Marangal to be led by Dalos Cantas de Manila.
Mayang magiliw pero sa silang anan alam ng puso sa dibdib mo'y buhay. Lupang hilirang duyan ka ng magiting sa manlulupik di ka pa sisil. Sa dagat at mundok sa simoyan sa langit pong paghaw may dilagang tulad at awit sa paglayang minamahal. Ang pisap ng mga tawat mulit ang umkay da nagmilingi ang lituwin at araw nga kailan pa may magdidili. Lupa ng araw ng malhatip ang sinta buhay langit sa piling mo. Amiligaya napag may mga api ang mamatay ng dahil sayo.
Puso at diwa ng senado ang katwiran isabatas ang miting makabayan.
Pilipino'y maligayang nabubuhay sa kalina ng paglay at katarungan.
Oh senado ng marangal at matatak malakas at diumuko sa dayuhan. Pag ang bigkis itong bansay nasa batas tuloy-tuloy at matuwi ang pagunlad. Oh senado ng marangal at matatak malakas at diumuko sa dayuhan. Pag ang bigkis itong bansay nasa batas tuloy-tuloy at matuwi ang pagunlad.
We thank Dalos Cantantes de Manila for the beautiful rendition of the national anthem as well as our Senate hymn. Acting Majority Leader.
Mr. President, we are in receipt of the NBC Resolution Number 08-255 from the Commission on Elections as the National Board of Canvassers for Senators and party list representatives in the elections held on May 12, 2025. I move that the resolution be read into record and request the secretary to read only the Comlec NBC Resolutions resolving clause.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion of the acting majority floor leader is approved. Comlec National Board of Canvassers Resolution 08-025 is deemed read into the records. Secretary will now read only the resolutory clause of the aforementioned resolution.
Now therefore, by virtue of the powers vested in it under the 1987 Constitution, the Omnibus Election Code and other election laws, the Commission on Elections sitting and bunk as the National Board of Canvassers hereby declares the following candidates as the duly elected senators of the Republic of the Philippines in the 12 May 2025 national and local elections ranked according to the number of votes obtained by each to serve for a term of six years beginning at noon of June 30, 2025 in accordance with Section 4, Article 6 of the 1987 Philippine Constitution. Number one, Go Christopher Lawrence Tesoro. Number two, Aquino Paulo Binigno Aguirre. Number three, Della Rosa Ronald Marapon. Number four, Tulfo Erwin Teixeira. Number five, Pangilinan Francis Pancreus Nepomuceno. Number six, Marcoleta Rodante Dizon. Number seven, Laxson Panfilo Moreno. Number eight, Soto Vicente III Castelo. Number nine, Cayetano Pilar Juliana Sharam. Number ten, Villar Camille Aguilar. Number eleven, Lapid Manuel Mercado. Number twelve, Marcos Maria Imelda Romualdes. So ordered. Signed, George Erwin M. Garcia Chairman, Commissioners Ferelino, Commissioner Bulay, Commissioner Maceda Junior, Commissioner Celis, Commissioner Kasingal, and Commissioner Pipo.
Thank you. We shall now proceed with the formal oath-taking. What is the pleasure of Senator Pangilinan?
Mr. President, before we proceed with the formal oath-taking, I just wish to place on record that my second name is Pancrasius, not Pancreus. For the record, Mr. President.
With our due apologies Senator Pangilinan, the records are hereby ordered to be corrected accordingly. We shall now proceed with the formal oath-taking of the newly elected senators. May we request the aforementioned newly elected senators to kindly rise in order that you may take your oaths from your respective seats. Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I please state your name. Having been elected to the position of senator, do hereby solemnly swear that I will well and faithfully discharge to the best of my ability the duties of my present position and of all others I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines that I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines, that I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities, and maintain true faith and allegiance to the Republic of the Philippines, and that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily without mental reservation or purpose of evasion. So help me God. Congratulations. Secretary will please call the roll.
Roll call of members, the Honorable Senator Aquino, Senator Cayetano Allen, Senator Cayetano Pia, Senator Della Rosa, Senator Ehsito, Senator Estrada, Senator Gatchalian, Senator Go, Senator Hontiveros, Senator Laxson, Senator Lapid, Senator Legarda, Senator Marcoleta, Senator Marcos, Senator Padilla, Senator Pangilinan, Senator Soto, Senator Tulfo Erwin, Senator Tulfo Rafi, Senator Villanueva, Senator Villar Camille, Senator Villar Marc, Senator Zubiri, Senator-- Senate President Escudero.
With twenty-four senators present, Chair hereby declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the session.
Any objection? Hearing none. Session is suspended.
Proceed with the election of the President of the Senate.
Is there any objection? There being none, we will now proceed with the election of the President of the Senate.
Mr. President, I move that Senator Villanueva be recognized for the nomination.
Senator Joel Villanueva is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Acting Majority Leader. Mr. President, esteemed colleagues, throughout the years, many extraordinary senators have graced this August chamber. With so many courageous, passionate, and committed public servants in this chamber, it is incredibly difficult, if not impossible, to leave a legacy that truly stands apart. But in our long history as an institution, I dare say that Senator Francis Cheese Escudero is characterized among those who have left an indelible mark. Our relationship with Senator Escudero dates back during our glory days in the lower house of Congress. At the young age of twenty-eight, he rose to represent the District of Sorsogon with distinction, matching and even surpassing the caliber of more seasoned and veteran lawmakers, serving as deputy majority leader and eventually as our minority leader. Noong ako po'y isang bagitong kongresista, noong 12th Congress, ako po'y tambay doon sa Majority Leader's office. Noong pong 13th Congress, tambayan ko naman ang Minority Leader's office sa basement ng North Wing Building sa Camera de Representantes. Hindi po dahil gusto ko 'yung amoy ng sigarilyo, kundi dahil parang classroom po na doon ay merong profesor na nagtuturo sa iyo. Twing lalabas po ako sa North Wing basement, ganado po ako palagi, or to say the least, palagi po akong inspired at confident. During those years, Mr. President, I saw Senator Escudero's deep respect for law, his brilliance as a lawyer, his charisma as a leader, and eloquence as a speaker. Hindi na po siya nagsisigarilyo ngayon. Mr. President, they say some people bring out the best in us. For me, that person is Senator Cheese. He doesn't just fund the flames, he ignites the fire. Here in the Senate, Senator Escudero has established a legacy that leads with courage, clarity, and an unwavering commitment to public service. In committee work, he has been known to cut through the noise and focus on solutions. Whether in bill and budget deliberations or oversight hearings, his grasp of detail and sense of justice remain uncompromising, Mr. President. Although he assumed the Senate presidency midstream, Senator Escudero did not settle for less. And numbers don't lie. Under his leadership, a historic, Mr. President, a historic 216 laws were passed during the third regular session. This is a proof of his outcome-focused mindset and ability to sometimes micromanage. But the opinion of the Filipino people about the Senate is also an important measure. According to the latest Pulse Asia survey in June, more than half or fifty-three percent of those surveyed are satisfied with the Senate's performance, an eight percentage point increase from forty-five percent in March of 2024. When challenges come, Senator Escudero stands firm, facing them with political maturity and discernment. He even patiently answers endless, repeated questions from our friends from the media, even from his critics. Not to grandstand, but to enlighten. During a time when our institution was under attack because of conflicting views on impeachment, he stood his ground and guided the Senate in the right direction. Napakarami pong sinalag ni Senator Escudero para protektahan ang ating minamahal na senado. Hindi po madaling harapin, Ginoong Pangulo, ang mga mapanghusgang mga kumento, masasakit na mga batikos ng ilang mga kritiko, at minsay mga below the belt na pag-aatake, lalo na po sa social media. Pero hinarap niya po ito ng may tapang, subalit, sa paraang mahinahon, matalino, at marespeto. At sa inilabas po na desisyon ng Korte Suprema tungkol sa impeachment, ang tanong, ang tanong, Ginoong Pangulo, hindi pa po ba klaro na tama ang landas kung saan dinala ni Senator Escudero ang buong senado? Hindi po tayo nagmadali, hindi rin naman natin inupuan ang impeachment, subalit sa isang sama-samang desisyon binigyang gabay ng ating SP na panatili natin ang moral high ground ng senado. Sa ganito pong mga pagkakataon ko po na dama ang lubos na pagmamalaki sa ating institusyon, Ginoong Pangulo, at maging lalong proud bilang miembro ng senado ang makagawa ng tamang desisyon para sa ating mga kababayan. In all humility, Mr. President, I can say that when Senator Escudero ran for Vice President in 2016, I could not support him. Because we belong to different parties, Mr. President. When he aimed for Senate presidency, I did not support him then either. Aaminin ko po, Mr. President, wala pong direktang suporta na nakuha sa akin si Senator Escudero sa mga nakaraang laban niya sa politika. So bakit po si Senator Cheese Escudero? Dahil buod po sa hindi nawala ang tiwala niya sa atin, hindi po niya tayo nakalimutang i-mentor, i-challenge, i-inspire. He truly brings out the best in us. Higit sa lahat, klaro po ang mga gusto niyang ma-accomplish. Sa kabila po ng ingay sa politika, ang gusto lang po niya, ay work, 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 work. I join his cause and I believe Senator Cheese can bring out the very best in the Senate this 20th Congress. Therefore, Mr. President, I nominate the good gentleman from Sorsogon, Senator Francis Cheese Escudero, as our Senate President. Thank you and may God bless us all.
Thank you Senator Joel Villanueva, Acting Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. President, I ask that Senator Gatchalian be recognized for his second nomination.
Senator Sherwin Gatchalian is recognized.
Maraming salamat. Maganumaga po sa lahat. Noong 19th Congress po, nagkaroon po ako ng pagkakataon at upertonidad na makatrabaho po si Senate President Cheese Escudero. At bilang chairman po ng Senate Committee on Ways and Means, ang aming trabaho ay gumawa ng batas para makahanap ng bagong sources of revenue. At dahil po sa kanyang liderato, guidance, at sabi na nga ni Senator Joel, pagpupursige, nakapagpasahoo kami ng sampung batas sa Committee on Ways and Means kung saan makakalikom ang gobyerno ng halos 300 billion in new sources of revenues. Hindi ko makakalimutan noong binabalangkas po namin 'yung Create More Law, isa sa pinakakomplikadong batas na hinawakan po ng Senate Committee on Ways and Means. Merong mga dalawa, tatlo, o apat na gabi na pumunta ho siya sa aking tanggapan, umupo doon hanggang hating gabi at hindi ho aalis kung hindi ho matapos 'yung batas. Kaya po dahil po sa kanyang pagpupursige, ang Create More Law ay ating na isabatas at ngayon ay pinapatupad po ng ating pamahalaan pang nasiyonal. So with that, Mr. President, it is my great honor, it is with great honor to second the nomination of Senate President Cheese Escudero.
Thank you Senator Gatchalian. Acting Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that Senator Ronald Bato Della Rosa be recognized to second the nomination.
Senator Ronald Bato Della Rosa is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, esteemed colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, as your attorney, it is my honor to express my profound support for one of the sharpest, most intelligent senators I have ever had the privilege of working with, a real attorney with a heart, Senator Cheese Escudero. He whose nomination I have the honor of seconding, so we may call once again him Senate President. I admit that I started as a reluctant supporter of our Senate President, caught up in the whirlwind of events at the time. I gave the kind of support that was almost synonymous with surrender, with raised hands and tear-stained eyes, as if to say, "Wala na rin akong magagawa." But in the last few months of the 19th Congress, he showed us how his steady hand and calm voice shielded the Senate from anything that gets in the way of our sworn duty to the people, from any threat to our mandate. Whether or not it is a coincidence that Escudero means shield bearer, I do not know. But of this, I am sure, Senator Cheese has more than lived up to his name safeguarding the Senate. In Senate President Escudero, we find exactly a leader who stands firmly at the forefront, ensuring that amid political fires, the Senate remains to be a body of still water that runs deep, reflective of the views and interest of the people. However, unlike a cold metal shield, his leadership warms our heart. With his almost transcendental adeptness, he comes up with a compassionate solution that works for all parties, especially for the Filipino people. And now, as I offer my support once again, it is no longer an act of defeat or surrender. No longer to say, "Wala akong magagawa." Instead, it is one of conviction. We are making the right decision. The shield bearer leader with a heart is the right choice. Maraming salamat, Mr. President, and I look forward to all that we shall accomplish in the 20th Congress.
Thank you Senator Bato Della Rosa, Acting Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that Senator Rafi Tulfo be recognized to second the nomination.
Senator Rafi Tulfo is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. My dear colleagues, today I rise not just to nominate a leader, but to honor a legacy of service, an unwavering commitment to the Filipino people. I proudly support the nomination of Senator Francis Cheese Escudero. More than anything, his experience and record in public service speaks for itself. From his early days as one of the youngest lawmakers in Congress to his role as Senate President during the 20th Congress, Senator Escudero has consistently championed legislation that uplifts lives. Under his leadership, the Senate passed key measures that strengthen our sovereignty, boost our economy, and protect our most vulnerable. But beyond the bills and titles, Senator Escudero brings leadership with heart. Matibay na puso ang kailangan upang pagtagpuing ang dalawampot tatlong makakaiba na opinyon dito sa senado at ibalanse mga ito sa direksyon na naistahakin ng ekutibo. He may have faced criticism for some decision taken as Senate President, but he made sure that those decisions were backed by sound reason and solid legal basis. As a leader, he was able to handle twenty-three hard-headed and strong 23 hard-headed and strong-willed individuals with 23 different advocacies and opinions. Kaya naman malaki ng respeto ko sa trabaho ng isang Senate President. So today, with full confidence in his ability to lead, to listen, and to deliver, I nominate Senator Francis Cheese Escudero because our nation deserves nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Rafi Tulfo, Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that Senator Juan Miguel Zubiri be recognized for his nomination.
Senator Juan Miguel Mig Zubiri is hereby recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Akala ko mali din 'yung pangalan ko. You read it right. Dear Mr. Colleagues, dear, my dear colleagues, rather, I have the honor of nominating for the Senate Presidency a tried and tested leader of this August chamber, a workhorse like no other, and a man who can strengthen the public trust in this institution in even the most turbulent times, no other than Senator Vicente C. Soto III. Senator Soto's track record speaks for itself. He's a veteran among veterans, beginning his career in public service as Vice Mayor of Quezon City in 1998, during which time he established the Vice Mayor's League of the Philippines. And by 1992, he began his first term in the Senate. He has been a hard-line anti-drug champion throughout his public service career, spearheading the passage of the Comprehensive Dangerous Drugs Act of 2002 and the Anti-Drunk and Drug Driving Act of 2012. In the realm of executive, he also served as the Chairman of the Dangerous Drugs Board in 2008 before his return to the Senate in 2010. Other notable laws to his name are the Juvenile Justice and Welfare Council Act, the Children's Emergency Relief and Protection Act, the National Athletes Coach and Trainers Benefits and Incentives Act, and the Motorcycle Crime Prevention Act, as well as the Bayonian to Heal Us One Act and the Doctor para sa Bayan Act. Throughout his 24 years in the Senate, as a testament to his great skill as a leader and a consensus builder, he has gained the trust of various sets of senators to serve as Majority Leader, as Deputy Minority Leader, and ultimately as Senate President. Having served in various leadership roles in the Senate, Senator Soto perhaps has developed a deep understanding of our rules and traditions, and more importantly, the gravity of upholding them. He does not just know our rules inside out, he also knows what chaos and instability will ensue if we fail to honor them. The Senate stands for more than just a legislative function. It stands for the very best of our nation's democratic ideals. And as Senate President, Senator Soto was a traditionalist in the very best sense of the word, protecting the Senate's stand and legacy as a nation's last bastion of democracy. He led, and I'd like to add for the record, that there was one time that his leadership was challenged because of his role of protecting each and every Chairman to allow each and every Chairman the leeway to act in accordance to their committee's structure and the ideals of their committee. And he never, he never meddled with these traditions of the Senate. As a traditionalist, he's protecting always the Senate's standing and legacy as the nation's last bastion of democracy. He led with fairness and transparency and led as primus interparis, first among equals. Walang linalamangan, ikaw nga. Under his leadership, the Senate had a healthy spirit and exchange of debates between the members. It also, but also a spirit of unity that inspired trust and confidence in the Filipino people. As his Majority Leader during his term as Senate President, I have seen firsthand his commitment to this institution and how he led by example. For instance, he was always present and on time. Walang absent, if there's anyone in this institution that claim the perfect attendance, it is him as well since the start of his legislative career, together with myself since 1998. I guess with him, it's 1992. To show his commitment to the institution as a legislator, he led definitely by example. For instance, even during the time of COVID, we were all online, Mr. President. All of us were online. I was in Cagayan di Oro as Majority Leader because there was a lockdown. Senator Soto, Mr. President, was present all the time in the session floor in the exact podium where the Presiding Officer is sitting right now. To be able to open session even at an elder age, he was a senior citizen. He was not afraid to come to the Senate and to start the sessions in that podium, your honors. Ikaw na lang ang mahiyah pagnaunaan ka niya sa session hall pag kayo late. And I'd like to give a short anecdote on that. As a matter of fact, those days, I would be late sometimes, as many of you know, sometimes I'm late for my meetings. But as Majority Leader, the Senate President Soto would always start session at 3:00 PM, regardless if we were here or not. And I could recall a few times, he would start session at 3:00 PM and suspend to await my arrival. Siyempre, nakakahiyah po 'yan. And I learned my lesson not to be late anymore. It was quite embarrassing, actually. But that was Senator Soto. He was a stickler for the rules and traditions. At bilang Senate President, lagi siyang handa para sa lahat na nangyayari at mangyayari sa Senado. From the day-to-day grind of legislative meal to the long-term timelines for our priority measures. Ikaw nga, walang trabahang maliit at walang problemang malaki para kay Senator Soto. Tito Sen was on top of everything, and the Senate functions smoothly under his guidance. So my dear colleagues, let us elect a leader who can help the Senate rise above the noise and establish itself once again as an institution dedicated to nothing but the best interests of the Filipino people. Let us elect Senator Vicente C. Soto III as our Senate President. Maraming, maraming salamat po at mabuhay ang Senado.
Thank you, Senator Mig Zubiri, Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that Senator Lauren Ligarda be recognized to second the nomination.
Senator Lauren Ligarda is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. It is my honor to second the nomination of Senator Vicente C. Soto III for the Senate Presidency. A former Senate President and the most seasoned member of this chamber, now in his fifth Senate term, Senator Soto brings unmatched institutional memory and legislative experience, as well as a firm grasp of the discipline and the decorum that this august institution demands. He understands both the weight of the Senate's traditions and the demands of principled dissent, qualities that powerfully distinguish his ability to lead the Senate. I was in my first term in 1998 till 2004. I was the Majority Leader in 2001, and he was the Minority Leader. Fast forward on my third term, he was a Senate President for many years, and I was his trusted Chairman of the Committee on Finance. We have worked together for more than 25 years, and I can attest to his discipline that he will lead with transparency, discipline, decorum, accountability, and many more, the traits needed by the institution at this time. This designation affirms our commitment to a Senate that is discerning and grounded in democratic principles, engaging in the work of legislation with integrity, transparency, accountability, and independence. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Lauren Ligarda, Majority Leader.
Mr. President, there are no other nominations. I therefore move that we close the period of nomination and proceed to vote for the position of the President of the Senate.
Is there any second? Senator Allen, Peter? Is there any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. We shall now proceed to vote.
Roll call vote. The Honorable Senator Aquino, Senator Kaya Tano Allen, Senator Kaya Tano Pia, Senator de la Rosa, Senator Escudero, Senator Ehersito, Senator Estrada,
Escudero.
Senator Gachalian, Senator Go, Senator Hontiveros, Senator Laxson, Senator Lapid, Senator Ligarda, Senator Marcoletta, Senator Marcos.
What is the vote? Hina.
Escudero.
Ano mahina?
Senator Padilla, Senator Pangilinan.
And I'd like to explain my vote after the voting.
Senator Soto, Senator Tulfo Irwin, Senator Tulfo Rafi, Senator Villanueva, Senator Villar Camille, Senator Villar Mark, Senator Zubiri.
There are 19 votes in favor of Senator Francis Cheese Escudero and five votes in favor of Senator Vicente Soto. Senator Francis Cheese Escudero is therefore elected President of the Senate. Senator Francis Pangilinan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to Senate President Escudero, maybe. Mr. President, fellow senators, please allow me to explain my vote.
Please proceed.
In the last 2025 elections, despite what critics said was a campaign headed for defeat, we defied the odds and pulled off a come-from-behind win and landed in the top five. Starved of much-needed resources, our ragtag team of mostly volunteers fought tooth and nail, tao sa tao, mano a mano, house to house, socmed account by socmed account. It was a bruising, hard-fought victory. And we campaigned daily for over six months throughout the country under one banner. Pababa in ang presyo ng bigas at pagkain, palakasin ang hanay ng magsasaka, mangingsda, at agriculture. It is a banner I know well. For over 15 years now, I have carried it in the legislative branch as Chairperson of the Agriculture Committee from 2010 to 2013, and then again from 2016 to 2017. In 2014 and 2015, I carried it more forcefully in the Executive Department as Food Security Secretary, heading the critical agencies such as, namely, National Food Authority, National Irrigation Administration, Philippine Coconut Authority, and the Fertilizer and Pesticide Authority. In a period of just one year during our stint, with a full backing of former President Aquino, we won a major battle for the Filipino people. Panalo ang kababayan natin dahil natigil natin ang pagtaas ng presyo ng bigas at napababa pa ito ng hanggang tatlong piso kada kilo sa loob lamang ng isang taon. From 2014 to 2015, we brought down rice inflation nationwide from 15% to 0.8%, running after smugglers, hoarders, cleansing the bureaucracy and corruption in the NFA Rice Supply Management, among others, that led to a savings of 7 billion pesos of government rice imports. By September 2015, we effectively managed rice prices and nationwide inflation was at its lowest in 20 years. Kaya kung maalala natin ng ating mga kababayan, nung mga panahon na yun, maraming nabibili ang limangdaan piso at isang libong piso sa palengke. Mababa pinakamababang inflation. It is in this context that my decision to align with the majority and with the support of the majority of our colleagues secure the chairmanship of the Senate Agriculture Committee. We are facing a nation, our nation, rather, is facing a food crisis. And high prices of food have led to unprecedented hunger incidents as well as unprecedented stunting among our children. I am not a political ally of the administration, but my 15 years' experience in the agri- and food sector, both in the legislative and executive branches, tells me that only if the executive and the legislative branches work together can we effectively bring down food prices and address hunger and food inflation. Nagawa na natin noon, at kung magbigay ng buong suporta ang ating Pangulo, magagawa natin ulit ngayon. Finally, in my 18 years as Senator, I have seen Senate Presidents come and go. I have seen majority and minority blocs dissolved periodically. I have witnessed political alignments rearranged and reconfigured repeatedly. But what is long-lasting, what has permanence, what has stability and certainty are the landmark pieces of legislation marshaled by effective experience and dedicated chairpersons of Senate Committees that enact into law and enacted into law that have a direct, meaningful, and lasting impact in the uplifting of the lives of millions of our kababaiyans. In the end, to reassure our voters and supporters, I say that our aligning with the majority does not and will not undermine our ability to remain fiercely independent as a Senator of the Republic. In my nearly two decades as Senator and nearly five years as Majority Leader, and I am certain former Senate Presidents Soto, Senators Ligarda and Laxson will agree with me. We have seen and worked with the likes of Senator Joe Carraroio, Senator Nene Pimentel, Senator Miriam Defensor Santiago, Senator Sergio Osmena III, who, joining the majority while aligned with the majority, were on many burning issues of the day, a majority of one. They all serve as inspiration for this representation to remain fiercely independent and, if need be, act as a majority of one in the service of the nation. Maraming salamat, Mr. President. Maraming salamat, dear colleagues.
Thank you, Senator Pangilinan, Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the session to allow the Senate President to take his oath.
Is there any objection? Hearing done. Session is hereby suspended. Majority Leader? Majority Leader?
Yes, I'm... Session resumed, Mr. President.
Session resumed. We shall now proceed with the oath-taking. Considering the solemnity of the occasion, may we ask the members of the Senate and our guests to please stand. The Honorable Senator Pia Kaitano will administer the oath to the Senate President-elect.
Senator Escudero, please raise your right hand and follow after me. I state your name.
I, Francis Cheese G. Escudero.
Having been elected to the position of...
Having been elected to the position of Senate President,
do hereby solemnly swear...
Do hereby solemnly swear...
That I will well and faithfully discharge...
That I will well and faithfully discharge...
The best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
The duties of my present position...
The duties of my present position...
And of all other I may hereafter...
And of all others I may hereafter...
Hold under the Republic of the Philippines...
Hold under the Republic of the Philippines...
That I will support...
That I will support...
And defend the Constitution of the Philippines.
And defend the Constitution of the Philippines...
And defend the Constitution of the Philippines...
That I will obey the laws...
That I will obey the laws...
Legal orders and decrees...
Legal orders and decrees...
Promulgated by the duly constituted authorities...
Promulgated by the duly constituted authorities...
And maintain true faith and allegiance...
And maintain true faith and allegiance...
To the Republic of the Philippines...
To the Republic of the Philippines...
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily...
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily...
Without mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
Without mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, the Senate will now elect the Senate President pro tempore. May I ask Senator Ronald Bato de la Rosa to be recognized to make the nomination?
Senator Bato de la Rosa is recognized for his nominating speech. You may proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. It has been said time and again that when it comes to politics, there are no permanent friends, no permanent enemies, only permanent interest. But, Mr. President, the man I have the honor to nominate for the position of Senate President pro tempore proudly stands as a challenge to that statement. My friend Senator Jingo Estrada. Mr. President, I am not nominating him for the position out of friendship alone. He has proven himself more than capable of leading this institution as its second highest official. In fact, he has been trusted with the same position in 2007, 2013, and once more in 2024, serving faithfully until the end of nineteenth Congress. With his hard-earned seniority and accumulated wisdom from this chamber, Senator Jingo is a leader who steps up and delivers whenever he needs to, right when we need him. He sees beyond political colors and alliances. Being in politics, what Senator Jingo shows us is that it is also in our best interest to be true in our dealings, transcending our self-imposed boundaries. If only interests are permanent in his life, Mr. President, then we ought to follow the example of Senator Jingo and treat authentic friendship as an interest. Together, we shall pursue what is best for all of us. This is his brand of leadership, and it is one that I can definitely stand behind. Back then, I had the duty of guarding and ensuring the safety and security of Senator Jingo while he was vacationing at the PNP Custodial Center. I can personally attest to the impeccable character of his person. Wherever chamber he may be in, his body may have been imprisoned, but his ideas and aspirations for the poor remained free. As he himself puts it, he is indeed a man of conviction. It is therefore my honor, Mr. President, to second, to nominate, to once again be our Senate President pro tempore, Senator Jingo Estrada.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, there are no other nominations. I therefore move that the period of nominations be closed for the position of Senate President pro tempore.
Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. Period of nomination for the position of Senate President pro tempore is hereby closed, and there being no other candidate, Chair hereby proclaims Senator Jingo Ehercito Estrada. As having been elected, Senate President pro tempore may request Senator Estrada to kindly ascend the rostrum and take his oath. May I also request his family to join him here at the rostrum.
Mr. President, may I request my kid brother to witness my oath-taking?
Hi, my brother. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Jingo Ehercito Estrada.
Having been elected to the position of Senate President pro tempore...
Having been elected to the position of Senate President pro tempore...
Do hereby solemnly swear...
Do hereby solemnly swear...
That I will well and faithfully discharge...
That I will well and faithfully discharge...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
The duties of my present position...
The duties of my present position...
And of all others I may hereafter hold...
And of all others I may hereafter hold...
Under the Republic of the Philippines...
Under the Republic of the Philippines...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines...
That I will obey the laws...
That I will obey the laws...
Legal orders...
Legal orders...
And decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities...
And decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities...
And maintain true faith and allegiance...
And maintain true faith and allegiance...
To the Republic of the Philippines...
To the Republic of the Philippines...
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily...
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily...
Without mental reservation...
Without mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, the Senate will now elect the Chairperson of the Committee on Rules. To make the nomination, I ask that Senator Alan Kaitano be recognized.
Senator Kaitano is recognized for his nominating speech. You may proceed, sir.
Mr. President, I'd like to thank God and thank our colleagues for this opportunity to nominate a man who, to many of us, is an untamed brother. When we agree with him, we agree with him one hundred and one percent. When we disagree with him, we disagree with him in a manner that the brothers fiercely disagree. But one thing we can say is that he is always there for us. He is always in the session hall. He loves the work of building consensus. He wants the right laws to be passed. He wants to protect this nation. His record speaks for itself, Mr. President. So, Mr. President, it's a great privilege to be one of those who will nominate, but also to ask our people to not only look at present news, social media, judge day by day certain actions, but put Joel Villanueva under the microscope. And when you put him under the microscope, you will see that he is seeking to build this nation. He is seeking God's kingdom here on earth. And I think, Mr. President, we will be very productive in the weeks, months to come having Senator Joel Villanueva again as our Majority Leader. Thank you, Mr. President. So I hereby nominate him as our Majority Leader.
Noted and entered into the records, Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we close the period of nomination.
Any objection? There being none. Period of nomination for the position of Chairperson of the Committee on Rules is hereby closed. And there being no other candidate, Chair hereby proclaims Senator Joel Villanueva as having been elected to the position of Chairperson, Committee on Rules. And under the rules of the Senate is the Majority Leader. May I now request Senator Villanueva to ascend the rostrum to take his oath. May I also request his wife and family members to join him in the rostrum. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Emmanuel Joel Jose Villanueva.
Having been elected to the position of Chairperson, Committee on Rules...
Having been elected to the position of Chairperson of the Committee on Rules...
Do hereby solemnly swear...
Do hereby solemnly swear...
That I will well and faithfully discharge...
That I will well and faithfully discharge...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
The duties of my present position...
The duties of my present position...
And of all others I may hereafter hold...
And of all others I may hereafter hold...
Under the Republic of the Philippines...
Under the Republic of the Philippines...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines...
That I will obey the laws...
That I will obey the laws...
Legal orders...
Legal orders...
And decrees promulgated...
And decrees promulgated...
By the duly constituted authorities...
By the duly constituted authorities...
And maintain true faith and allegiance...
And maintain true faith and allegiance...
To the Republic of the Philippines...
To the Republic of the Philippines...
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily...
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily...
Without mental reservation...
Without mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this juncture, I move that we proceed with the election of the Secretary of the Senate. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Mr. President, for the position of the Secretary of the Senate, may I respectfully nominate Attorney Renato N. Bantug Jr. So move, Mr. President.
Attorney Renato N. Bantug Jr. is hereby nominated. Are there any other nominees?
Mr. President, there are no other nominations. I therefore move that the period of nomination be closed. So move.
Any objection? Chair is none. Motion is hereby approved. There being no other candidate, Attorney Renato N. Bantug Jr. is hereby elected as Secretary of the Senate. The oath-taking to take place after the session. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President, at this juncture, I move that we now proceed with the election of the Sergeant-at-Arms.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Mr. President, may I move that we recognize Senator Bato de la Rosa for his nomination?
So move, Mr. President. Senator de la Rosa is recognized for his speech nominating the Senate Sergeant-at-Arms.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I hereby nominate Police Major, retired Police Major General Maual Aplaska as our Sergeant-at-Arms. Mr. President, I know personally General Aplaska since we were both members of Philippine Military Academy, class of eighty-six, but unluckily, he graduated in nineteen eighty-seven. While our outgoing Sergeant-at-Arms, General Angkan, Bob Angkan, took a bullet for me when we were ambushed in the Compostila Valley Province when I was the Provincial Director and he was the Brigade Commander, General Maual Aplaska helped me graduate from the Philippine Military Academy and surpass our plibhood because we were both coming from the provinces of Davao and we both didn't know how to speak Tagalog when we were in the PMA. So wala pa ako ibang makausap, Mr. President, kundi 'yung kabayan ko na bisaya na taga-Davao and he helped me a lot in our plibhood. And, Mr. President, it is my honor to nominate, once again, retired Police Major General Maual Aplaska to be our Sergeant-at-Arms.
Thank you, Senator de la Rosa. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, there are no other nominations and therefore I move that we close the period of nomination. So move.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. There being no other candidate, Police Major General Maual Renata Aplaska is hereby elected as Sergeant-at-Arms of the Senate. Again, the oath-taking to follow after the session. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, we are ready to hear the address of the Senate President.
Esteemed members of the Diplomatic Corps, members of the Cabinet, my dear colleagues in the Senate, both past and present, my fellow workers in government, As we open the twentieth Congress of the Republic of the Philippines, allow me to begin, as I do every morning, with a prayer for serenity. If you're familiar with it, kindly bear with me. Lord, grant us the serenity to accept with patience the things we cannot change. Grant us the courage to change the things that we can and, most importantly, grant us the wisdom to know the difference. These words have comforted me all of my life, especially now as we enter another turbulent chapter in our nation's history. These words also offer clarity in times of confusion and calm in moments of crisis. Of late, there seems to be no shortage of either. It seems our days are full of contention and conflict, issues that divide, politics that polarize, and partisanship that distracts us from our work. Some will say we are a divided nation and that this is reflected even in our chamber. To this, I say, in a democracy, disagreement is not division and that debate is not synonymous with dysfunction. On the contrary, I believe that disagreements, debates, and disputes are evidence that our democracy is alive and well. For as history has shown us, democracy does not wither from too much debate. Rather, it dies from too little. In our line of work, we should not and cannot take things personally, especially in the age of social media where every citizen has a platform in the palm of his or her hands. We should not and cannot respond to every comment. We should rise above. We should rise above any anger, resentment, and bitterness we may have. We should move on. We should move forward, and we must continue to do our job. We are here to serve our people, guided by our conscience, driven by our conviction, and emboldened by courage. We should not and cannot bow to a mob. We will not be cowed by the surest of voices. We will stand up for what is right, what is just, and what is consistent with the rule of law and our constitution. That we disagree does not mean that you are right and I am wrong or that I am right and you are wrong. After all, nobody has a monopoly of good ideas, intentions, and plans for our country, nor does anyone have a monopoly for love of our country. Just because I am not on your side does not necessarily mean I am on the wrong side. Let history be the judge of that. For hindsight is always twenty-twenty. We are the nation's conscience, and it's the final check of abuse and tyranny of the so-called majority at times, unyielding to threats unmoved by noise and unafraid to say no if it is the right thing to do. And let me make one more thing clear, though. Yes, I may hold the gavel. I may preside over sessions, issue orders, and signal the start and end of debates. But this Senate is not mine alone to lead. The direction we take, the direction we will take, will never be determined by a single hand, much less my hand, but by twenty-four heads, each with a mandate, each with a mind, each with a voice that matters. This is a collective body, and its strength lies in the balance, not in the banging of that gavel. While we come from different provinces, parties, and pasts, I have no doubt... I have no doubt this Senate shall prevail despite the issues that have come to divide us. We have overcome them before and we shall overcome these again. Throughout history, humanity has strived on the rich tapestry of diverse perspectives, each contributing a unique thread to the fabric of our society. It is this mosaic of voices that brings innovation, progress, and understanding. No one perspective holds all the answers and it is precisely in our differences that we should find strength. We must cherish diversity of thought and approach it with humility. We are part of an ever-evolving conversation where every voice should matter, where dialogue leads to discovery, and where disagreement can be just a stepping stone to deeper comprehension. Let us open our minds, listen actively, and learn from one another. And in the 20th Congress, as in those before it, there will be many deliberations and discussions, some more contentious than others. In these moments, I pray we choose to listen more, not to shout louder, to disagree without being disagreeable, to always be respectful and to respect each other's opinion, to speak not to score political points but to make a point, and to debate not to destroy each other but to build the nation together. At the end of the day, we must work together to find common ground and common cause, to find common solutions to our common problems. Every day, the Filipino people look to the Senate to come up with solutions that will improve their lives, address their needs, and bring their aspirations within reach. First, to put food on their tables, roofs on their heads, and sufficient paychecks in their pockets. To lower the cost of living so that each family may live comfortably and humanely. To open doors of opportunity, provide meaningful jobs, and support to small businesses. To support the farmers who feed our people yet cannot feed their own. To write a national syllabus that will truly educate our children and prepare them for the future. To provide a healthcare system that treats the sick without bankrupting their families. To install a safety net for those who fall through the cracks and enable them to rise again. To safeguard our streets from the influence of drugs and crime, protect our rights and ensure that justice is accessible and served swiftly and fairly for all. To defend our borders, secure our seas, and uphold our sovereignty while maintaining cordial relations with other nations. To protect our environment, adapt to climate change and shield our people from the ravages of natural disasters. To fight graft and corruption, restore dignity and efficiency in public service, and reform our politics. And last but not the least, to lay the foundations, both physical and legal, that will ensure that every Filipino partakes in the bounty of development. Ultimately, every act we take, every law we make, must pass a single test. This is our duty. This is our mandate. But as we all know, the elections are over and the last ballot has been counted. For the sake of our people, it is time we trade the colors of our campaigns for the colors of our country. In place of the colors that divide us, let us embrace the colors that truly matter, the colors that define who we are as a nation, the colors on the flag that hangs before us. Our flag has endured war and occupation, dictatorship and disaster, revolution and crisis, and still it continues to fly in the hearts and minds of our people. It stands before us now, not as a mere symbol, but a solemn reminder of the country that we serve, the people we represent, and the duty we have sworn to fulfill. Let us carry out this collective duty with humility, integrity, and purpose as we begin this new chapter of the Senate together.
Mr. President.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. President, in line with the call from the Senate President, may we invite all members of the Senate to attend all members caucus tomorrow at 1:00 PM in the Senate President's office. Just to put that on record, Mr. President. Mr. President, at this juncture, may I move that we recognize the distinguished gentleman from Bukidnon, Senator Mig Zubiri, who is seeking the floor.
What is the pleasure of the Honorable Zubiri?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President, we would just like to manifest on those who dissented on the election of the Senate President that we would like to nominate for our minority floor leader no other than Senator Vicente Soto III, just for the record. Thank you, Mr. President.
Noted and entered into the records. Senator, what is the pleasure of Senator Soto?
Mr. President, thank you. I'd like to thank my majority leader and former Senate President Mig Zubiri for that. I have been a gold soldier of this August body since 1992 and I am always honored by any position entrusted to me by my esteemed colleagues. So I pledge to perform the duties and responsibilities of being the minority leader. And just for the record, a reminder to all of us, Proverbs 3, verse 6. In everything you do, put God first and He will direct you and crown your efforts with success. Thank you and congratulations, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Soto, and we look forward to engaging and working actively with the minority of this chamber. What is the pleasure of Senator Pangilinan?
Yes, Mr. President, just a parliamentary inquiry.
What is the parliamentary inquiry of the Honorable Pangilinan?
Yes, Mr. President, we elected the chairman of the Committee on Rules. He went up the rostrum and took his oath as majority leader. Should we not give the same procedure with the minority leader? By tradition, the majority and the minority leaders are our officers. By tradition, it is not in our rules. And so perhaps, and the tradition, I understand, of having the majority leader take his oath happened maybe two or two congresses ago. I mean, to provide, I understand Senator Soto, our minority leader, is declining, but to provide the minority the stature that they deserve, how the majority treats the minority is indicative of how there is parliamentary courtesy. I think it's courtesy to allow the minority leader, should he agree, to likewise take his oath.
Senator Soto is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much to my favorite nephew-in-law. I thank you for that. But it grieves my heart to decline because when we elected Senator Frank Rilon as minority leader, we didn't ask him to take the oath anymore. So I can take the oath by merely saying that I will perform the duty of a minority leader. Thank you. Thank you, Senator Pangilinan.
We thank Senator Pangilinan for his suggestion. Likewise, we thank the magnanimity of Senator Soto. But for the record, Senator Soto is correct. That has never been done before, especially given the fact that the minority leader is selected and not elected. But we can always establish a new tradition should the minority leader agree or any minority leader agree to do so at some future time.
Just for the record, Mr. President, I observe this because, not that I was disappointed, but I did not take my oath as majority leader when I was majority leader in 2004. So I suppose, again, traditions form part of our rules. Presidents rather form part of our rules and if that has been the precedent that the majority leader takes his oath while the minority leader does not, we have no objections, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Pangilinan. Majority floor leader.
Yes, we thank Senator Pangilinan and again congratulate our minority leader, our esteemed colleague, our former Senate President, Senator Tito Soto. Mr. President, at this juncture, I move that we adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number One. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Consideration of proposed Senate Resolution Number One is now in order. Senate Secretary is directed to read the title only of the measure.
Resolution informing President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Jr. that the Senate has been organized with the election of its officers and that this body has entered upon the exercise of its functions for the first regular session of the 20th Congress of the Philippines.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number One.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Proposed Senate Resolution Number One is hereby adopted.
Mr. President, at this juncture, I move that we consider proposed Senate Resolution Number Two. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Consideration of the aforementioned resolution is now in order. Senate Secretary is directed to read the title only of the measure.
Resolution informing the House of Representatives that the Senate has been organized with the election of its officers and that this body has entered upon the exercise of its functions for the first regular session of the 20th Congress of the Philippines.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number Two.
Any objection? Hearing none. Proposed Senate Resolution is hereby adopted.
Mr. President, I move that we consider House Concurrent Resolution Number One. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Consideration of House Concurrent Resolution is now in order. Senate Secretary is directed to read the title only of the measure.
Concurrent Resolution Providing for the Senate and the House of Representatives to hold a joint session to hear the message of the President of the Republic of the Philippines.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number One.
Any objection? Hearing none. House Concurrent Resolution Number One is hereby adopted. Majority leader.
Mr. President, I move that we consider Senate Concurrent Resolution Number One. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Senate Secretary is directed to read the title only of the measure.
Concurrent Resolution Creating a Joint Committee of the Senate and the House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that the Congress now convened for its first regular session of the 20th Congress of the Philippines is ready to hear the State of the Nation address in a joint session of both houses.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt Senate Concurrent Resolution Number One.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senate Concurrent Resolution Number One is hereby adopted. Pursuant thereto, Chair hereby appoints the following to the Joint Notification Committee on the Part of the Senate, namely, Senators Estrada, Villanueva, Ersito, Cayetano, Alan, and our distinguished minority floor leader, Senator Soto. So ordered, majority leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Before we suspend the session, may we request our colleagues to remain at the session hall for the official pictorial. We advise the public not to enter the hall while the pictorial is ongoing. Mr. President, there being no further business, I move that we suspend the session until 4 o'clock this afternoon, at which time we shall reconvene at the session hall of the House of Representatives to hear the State of the Nation address of President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Jr. in a joint session of both Houses of Congress. And upon its adjournment, the session of the Senate shall be considered adjourned until 3 o'clock in the afternoon of Tuesday, July 29, 2025. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. The session is suspended until 4 o'clock this afternoon for the joint session of Congress. May the Chair again remind our colleagues to remain on the floor for our traditional picture, opportunity, picture-taking, and for our respective spouses to kindly remain in the gallery for the photo op as well. The members of the Senate are advised to proceed and to be seated at the Senate Session Hall of the House of Representatives on or before 3:30 PM. Session is suspended.